It lists all the positions that that particular union has covered.
Right.
If it's a new position that's not listed in that particular CBA, the collective bargain agreement, then it's something that the union has to petition to the Labor Board. But at the same token, the individual also must be requesting that. There's, you know, like I said, there's multiple stages, so, before you even get there. I mean, the town has a right to review first before it goes to the Labor Board. So there's a whole process, as like I said before, that's not something that says, okay, they're automatically going to the union.
Okay, thank you. Finally, I just want to be sure of something. If we were to fund this job through the current fiscal year, this would not become a unionized position?
No, it would be listed as an interim position.
Interim position, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Antezzo.
I, uh, thank you. I have a question for Mr. Harden, and I appreciate the problems that he had. I just have to ask you, did you, when you, when the mattress was out there on the sidewalk or road, did you call the blight officer?
At first, I did not. I actually called Diane at Public Works, and because they did not respond to it, then I then contacted the blight officer, which it was actually, there was a garbage truck out there probably, I want to say 11:30, to pick it up.
Okay.
And I have a whole calendar at home. Every day, I call Diane. Diane knows me like clockwork, 6:30 in the morning, so...
You have brought up an interesting point, which is, I'm going to make a slight deviation now. A lot of times, people will call and complain about things, and they tell me, they call me up, as you get calls, and we all get calls. And they've called the town hall, or they've called somebody. They invariably either are calling the wrong person, I've found that out to be, or things just don't get taken care of, they get ignored. And I think that's something the town should be working on. However, I am concerned that if people are not calling about your trash pile and so forth, I know I called the blight officer, and I got a prompt response on something that I had observed in my district. Perhaps we don't have as much people piling up trash, but every, I'm sure it's all over town that there would be problems. I'm not so sure that we need to go the route that Mr. Posner mentioned, which by the time you add in benefits, I assume that would, full-time would being benefits, yes?
Yes, but the benefit figure I gave you just now would be for full year.
And then if he's eligible for a 401K, we're not talking just about $54,000 here, you're right, probably $60,000 to $70,000. And I am not so sure that we need a full-time person to do what is necessary at this particular point.
I'm going to add to this conversation. When I saw this resolution, I do believe that there is a need to address the blight problem in town. And my concern is that with one full-time person, when that person is sick or on vacation, that there's no coverage. So, to me, it's better, in the last budget, we had envisioned two part-timers. I would rather have two part-timers than one full-timer. That way, there's coverage during those times when one person isn't there. And that way, your districts and my district and all districts in town that have blight issues would be assured that there is coverage.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Just a point of clarification, and maybe this, I can give this to Mr. Eng here. Two part-time positions, that would mean no benefits and no 401K.
If they work nineteen and a half hours each, yes. The current situation was to have, we had two part-timers working ten hours a week. So they weren't working forty-hour work weeks or thirty-seven and a half. They were working just ten hours each, so basically twenty hours a week, which was what the budget called for. So you would have to still increase the budget if you wanted to hire two part-timers to work nineteen and a half hours each per week.
At how many hours per week do you qualify for health benefits?
More than nineteen and a half.
And is that, is that a full health plan package?
That's correct, that's what's based on.
And that's completely compensated by the town? Or is, or do you have to pay into it as an employee?
Well, you'd still have to make the contribution for the 457. You would still have to make your contribution. The town doesn't contribute into the 457 if you don't contribute. So if you contribute zero, the town contributes zero.
For the medical?
No, no, that's for the 457.
No, I'm talking about the medical.
The medical, they would have to contribute X percentage of their weekly pay, like everybody else does.
And that's also with full-time?
That's full-time, or if they qualified as a part-time above nineteen and a half hours, that's correct.
Okay, so the $11,000 number for a single medical plan?
Right.
Is that the town's responsibility? Is that the town's part that they're paying into it?
If it's a sink, well, no, it's actually less than that because the, it's about $1,500 less or so, maybe $2,000 max from the town's contribution. The overall cost was $10,000 to the town for the annual cost of a single individual for medical and dental. They have to input their weekly contribution, which approximately is $1,500 to $2,000, so it's, the town's actual cost is around $8,000 to $8,500, depending on the exact percentage of contribution. And that's again for the full year. If you're only doing it for an interim basis for five or six months, because we're already in January, they're not going to qualify for medical benefits until February at the earliest. You're only paying for five months of medical benefits and dental benefits.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Harden?
So, you know, I've lost, listened to everyone's concerns, and, you know, this is, this is not for an individual, this is for my district. We went and we spent $60,000 plus on a skating rink that still has some major complications. We're still sinking money into it, it's uneven, the water's dirty because the fire department opened up the hydrant and didn't let it run before putting it in there.
Does where it drowned?
I'm sorry, Mr. Harden?
Please do not interrupt me, all right? Please do not interrupt me. I respect you when you talk, so please do not interrupt me when I talk. Enough with the antics, okay? Please let me finish my conversation. I show you respect, so please show me respect, thank you. So this is for my district. This is not for me individually, this is not for anyone else. We could agree to everything around in all the other districts. My district has suffered for many years. I'm coming to you compassionate, without a hidden agenda, being transparent, and telling you what my district needs. And everyone is like, well, it's going to cost us this, it's going to cost us that. We've made a lot of decisions that have cost us a lot of money, a lot of poor decisions. And I'm asking you to help this community, to help the districts, my district, your district, Wally's district, everyone's district. Get in your car and drive down Hollister Street, Jackson Avenue, Agresta Terrace, okay? Barnum Avenue by McDonald's. Look at all these places that are falling down, the porches are falling down, there's garbage all over the yards. Look at that. I bet half of you guys don't receive the phone calls that I receive, and the emails and the letters that I received about the garbage going on. This is not about a political position, this is about having compassion and caring. We speak every day about transparency, and right now, it's not being shown. I am compassionate about, I have compassion about my district. And this is something that needs to be done for my district. I want to be able to go back to the twelve people that call me and say, hey, listen, you, the message you left me, it didn't fall on deaf ears. We're able to do it, we have time to do it, we're going to get the stuff moved off, we're going to contact these landlords. It's a job that pays within itself. So I'm asking you, as fellow councilmen, as fellow neighbors in district, this is not tip for tap, what I voted for you for, what you didn't vote for me for, this and that, who says this, I don't care about that. We have to work together. And I'm asking you, as the fourth district councilman, to let's get this done. And I sit up here, and I don't say too much, but this is something that I'm compassionate about, because I live in that district. And I hate going down the street and looking at filth all over the place.
Okay, thank you. Then it was Mr. Khan.
Thank you, Chair, person. When two part-time positions were created, there must have been some wisdom when that was originally authorized. So I don't want to second-guess the wisdom of having two part-time positions, for example, one is someone sick and the other one can cover. Why did we not fill the other part-time position when it became vacant?
No one else had applied. There was only two people who applied, so we hired, we interviewed them.
Did we repost the position after the second person left?
No, we did not. It was, there was training issues and saying, you know...
So there was really no posting for anyone to apply to, although two people originally applied?
That's correct.
So, I'll answer this. So what we did is, we had two people that applied for the job.
Yeah.
They were both qualified. We hired them, they went through training, and ended up that one didn't have enough time to do it, so he ended up stepping down. The current blight officer was not only able to cover, but was doing a good job. So we just ran with having the one blight officer continue doing what he's doing, and the results have shown that he's done a lot. So I think the logic behind having two part-timers was, we initially had a part-time person, and he would take some time off during the wintertime, and he was out of state. Then there was a question, that was a unique situation because he was part-time.
Madam Chair?
Just one second. This nineteen and a half hour limitation, as it adds up to an average over fifty-two this week fiscal year, would that limitation be eliminated if we hired a full-time person as, well, if you hired someone as an interim person, say, at thirty hours a week? Trying to say, what other theoretical alternatives we have aside from creating a full-time position?
Well, once you hit the nineteen, anything above nineteen and a half hours by our charter, you have to give them the benefits. So if you're, you know, I mean, so you can limit hours if you choose to. Again, I don't, I'm not in the blight department, I just know that they do have a lot of costs. So the question is to the council, district members, and the council members here is, you know, what can get done in a short amount of time? Because we, as the mayor pointed out, we used to have someone who was part-time, less than nineteen and a half hours, and was not able to accomplish everything.
If we created a full-time interim position, you mentioned there was zero chance that it could become a, quote, "non-at-will" position.
Well, it would not be an automatic union position in the interim basis, because it's an evaluation of the position. That's why you do an interim position, to see if it's something that's suitable. Like you said, based on an interim basis, you may come back and say, we don't need to have them work full-time, we can have them working shorter time, still getting benefits, but saving maybe on their salary, if that's what you guys choose to do.
Does the position have a, what I'll call a performance standard? Do we say, when we created these two part-time positions at ten hours a week, did we say how many, for example, site visits were required a week? Or how much paperwork would have to be completed within a certain amount of time?
There was, there are evaluations of performance. I don't have the specifics of what that department head was using, because we had a switch-over from Gary Lawrence into Jay Hivinsky, so there was a switch-over of him supervising them specifically, so I can't tell you, speak on the specifics of what he evaluated, but I do know that he did have an evaluation system that he had put in place.
So the interim full-time position would solve theoretically Wally and Dave's concerns about continuous blight coverage, but it would not commit us to a full-time position following the end of the current fiscal year?
Yeah, I would say basically, having an interim person increase hours, as we're talking about, to a full-time would actually help the whole town, but obviously focusing on the two areas that have made, voiced their opinions, but I think it services for the whole town, the blight officer, not just a few districts.
Thank you. But it would not commit us to making it a full-time position in the next fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. I think it was Mr. Kadim, and then Mr. Farrington Posner?
Go first.
Colton, you though, do you want this floor now?
I'll let him go first, I go second.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Thank you, Mr. Kadim, and Madam Chair. Okay, couple things. Tell me a little bit about the training, and how many hours of training did the blight officer go through, and how much did that cost the town for two blight officers to go through that training earlier last year?
I don't have that figured, I'm not sure of the...
It was a ten-week course at Southern University, and it was paid for by the zoning department. I don't know the exact cost, because it was picked up by zoning. I was never involved with the fee.
Okay, so you've already been trained, and it's already cost the town to train you to be a blight officer?
Correct.
Okay.
And I also took two courses at Wesleyan University, and as a land use board member too, which also added blight education.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'm hearing, you know, Mr. Harden speak about his district, and I applaud him for sitting up here and representing his district and pouring his heart out to us of how they need help with blight. But then it makes me think about my district, and listening to the concerns of my district. And I can tell you that a few months ago, when I walked that district and walked hundreds of homes, the number-one issue I heard about was taxes, and how their taxes were increased, and how people can't afford to live in their homes anymore. People that have lived in those homes for decades, that are now on social security, and with the tax increase, they don't know if they're going to be able to stay in their homes, the homes they've put their entire lives into, all their money into, they've raised their children in, their children have gone to school here, and now they're retired, they're on a fixed income, and they just got, on average, a $350 tax increase. So now that's my first concern, because that's what I heard over and over again, whether it was them pleading to me, yelling at me about it, or crying to me. And there were quite a few people that were crying. So now I have to think, what's best for District Two? And as far as I'm concerned, spending money without having a plan is not the way to go. We don't even know if this is going to be a union position going forward, a non-union position. I think it's time that we table this issue. I think we should table it for now. It's...
Is that a motion to table?
It's a motion to table. We don't have all the information we need still.
Is there a second motion to table?
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling, say aye.
Yes.
Mr. Farrington Posner, you're in favor of tabling? Mr. Kadim?
Mr. Posner, if I knew you was going to do that, I would have spoke before you, but... You know what I mean?
If you like, I'll remove my motion to table and let you speak, I'll, I'll rescind that motion to table.
We're in the middle of a vote. Mr. Leclerc, right, we're in the middle of a vote? You can't rescind in the middle of a vote? You can vote no, if you want to change your vote to no.
We're not getting all the votes, it's too late to rescind.
Yeah, you can't rescind.
I can't rescind. Oh, before I answer...
You can change your vote, if you want to vote no.
I'll vote no to table.
Okay, after making the motion. Okay, Mr. Kadim, are you voting yes or no to table?
First of all, of course, is no to table.
Okay, let me just do this quickly, okay? There was a request, Mr. Harden to table?
No. No.
No.
No.
No, okay, that, your motion to table fails, Mr. Farrington Posner.
Short call.
Okay, Mr. Kadim?
Thank you very much. I hear everybody speaking, and everybody have, you know, this concern about money being spent, and it's a mind-blower to me that you actually took the time to even talk about money. And the fact that everybody voted, everybody voted differently on the budget, so it was five to five, and the mayor broke the tie. So if you really cared about money, you wouldn't have voted for the mayor's budget, that's the first thing. So I guess you really don't care about money. Other part of it is, this is money well-spent, so do what you want to do. I like the work that's being done. I think a person is more committed when they have a full-time versus a part-time job, because some people mentally check out for a part-time job, oh, I ain't going to work, I don't need them hours, I'll make that up next week. Person that has to be there full-time, going to act like they have a job, and going to be more preservative, just like we saw with the road to registrar. We changed that to full-time, what happened? They're doing great work, they're getting all the information out, they're doing what they need to do, so that we can have the voters come down, make sure... I've had people in my district trying to vote that didn't know where to vote. I get on the phone call, they tighten it up right away, person went where they needed to go to get their vote. So that's, if there was a part-time, they wouldn't be there. So all of those things are important. Me personally, I had part-time jobs, I had full-time jobs. Sometime at the part-time job, I would say, well, look, I have to put more time in at my other job, I'll stay overtime, there's more money involved, so they can keep the part-time, I won't make it tonight. So I think going full-time is important, you do what you guys want to do, but that's just my opinion, and I've had success with calling the blight officer, getting some things done in my district. I don't know about you guys, but I've been living there eighteen, now since my nineteenth year living in Stratford. And, like I said, prior to being in this seat, making phone calls was deaf ears. Now, I make a call, blight officer jumps out, get it done. So I don't know what, I mean, those people are privileged to live in two-plus, two, two-hundred-thousand-plus houses, they probably have people who can afford to walk down the curb and clean up, and then you have some elder people in my district that's elderly, they can't hardly move around, and I do a Chevrolet snow, sometime I help out with a neighbor. So everyone needs service, everyone, you know, those who live in half a million-dollar houses, and those who live in hundred-thousand-dollar houses, everybody needs service. And it seems like the blight officer is not looking about who make what, he just go do the job, so that's how I look at it.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Llewellyn?
Would it be possible to add in the word interim before full-time in the resolution, so we can pass the resolution, address this problem for this year, get some of the unanswered questions answered, and then get this labeled as a full-time budgeted position for following budgets? I mean, I think we're all kind of up here right now, we've been talking about this for over an hour, we're kind of looking for a way to split the baby, let's get our business done, and let's move on.
Okay, is that a motion to amend the main motion?
Yes.
Okay, is there a second to that? Okay, all in favor of amending, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, all opposed? Okay, the motion to amend passes ten to zero.
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Chase.
I call the question.
Okay, all in favor of calling the question, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion, I'm sorry, all opposed? Motion passes ten to zero. Now for the main question, as amended, so that...
Madam Chair, point of information, where did the word interim, uh... In front of full.
For an interim full-time blight officer.
So it should be interim full-term blight officer.
It should be N-A-N.
English teacher in the house?
For an interim full-time blight officer, okay. I'm going to, all in favor of the resolution? Okay, we will do a roll call. Mr. Farrington Posner, are you in favor of this resolution?
Passed.
Mr. Kadim?
Yes.
Mr. Harden?
Yes.
Mr. Khan?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Yes.
Ms. Antezzo?
Yes.
Okay, Mr. Chase?
Yes.
Mr. Llewellyn?
Yes.
Ms. Manis?
Yes.
Uh, who passed? Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Yes.
Okay, passes unanimously. Okay, thank you very much, let's move on to...
Thank you, guys.
Let's go back to...
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I believe we're on seven point one?
We're on seven point one Financial Advisory Committee, on page four of the agenda, yes.
I move we table?
Okay, motion to table, all in favor?
Second.
Second, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, motion passes ten to zero. Tabled items, I'm just going to run through these, if there's something that you don't want tabled, tell me. TOD, that was tabled the last time.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I would like to suspend the council rules to accept a proposal, to add a proposal to accept a favorable recommendation by the Tax Partnership Screening Committee to accept the application of Two Roads Brewing Company.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
To add that to the agenda? I'm sorry, that was Mr. Harden who seconded? Okay, all in favor of adding that to the agenda, amending the address?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed? Okay, motion passes ten to zero. Ms. Antezzo, so if you can tell us about the...
She's referring to me. The motion was made by me in the Tax Abatement Partner Screening Ship, it was passed favorably. The motion is to follow the abatement, Article Five rules, that were confirmed by Mr. Leclerc, and our Tax Assessor's Office was there as well. It will be a 50% of added value for three years. So Two Roads is having a $300,000-plus improvement on their current property. Because the exact number of the construction isn't finalized, it will probably fall under the $500,000 threshold, which means that it would be 50% of added value, according to our code, and we approved it as the Partnership Screening Committee with Quorum unanimously for three years. So when that number, that final 50%, comes, this was done because Two Roads is a employer and a great contributor to our Stratford landscape. So this was the max that we could give them at the rate that they are. They will then apply later for personal property, because they're under manufacturing, personal property abatements and those things after. And if they need to amend their original, if for some reason it goes over $500,000, they will come back to the screening committee. But for right now, we're asking you to approve that and give them their abatements, so that they can begin construction.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Thanks, thanks.
I just have one question. I thought that Two Roads was in the process of adding millions of dollars, is this part of it to the town's tax rules?
No, this is the storage area for $350,000.
Okay. It's an improvement to an existing property. And we are also, point of discussion, we are also, we've been working with the Tax Assessor's Office, and she's in the middle of tax season now, but we want to restructure this program, so that we can be more attractive to businesses, especially on Stratford Avenue and Barnum Avenue, and to give these people proper abatements. But Melinda wants, I'm going to name her, Melinda wants to work with the people and find out what they need before she comes to the partnership screening to readjust this law. Whatever happens going forward into future elections, and I would say any of you that return to this council, you need to remember that this law needs to be looked at again, this part of the code, it has to be done, and it can't be lost. So if you want to put in the minutes or whatever, it is, I've done a grid for everybody, so that they understand what it is, it works, but then the whole thing needs to be looked at in light of 21st century, and what's happening.
Okay, thank you. There's no more discussion, all in favor of the tax abatement for Two Roads, say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes ten to zero, thank you for your work. Okay, now let's look at the tabled items.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I have a question for you, are committee reports on the agenda tonight?
Committee reports?
I don't see anything for committee reports.
Any that were submitted for discussion, there are, committee reports do not get onto agendas unless there's a request to put them on the agenda.
That was item five on your agenda.
Was it on here? I didn't see it.
Yeah, we had the short beach. So let me move through the tabled items, TOD, there's dog park location, cost of dog park, that was all tabled. Okay, there's no motion, no movement on those. Tabled ordinances and resolutions, center school, is there a motion to, that center school, that was tabled. Tabled appointments, I'm going to move through these unless there's a motion made to take something off the table?
I make a motion to take the center school resolution off the table.
Okay, is there a second to taking that off the table? All in favor of taking that off the table, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Okay, the motion passes seven to three. Okay, it's off the table.
Madam Chairman? Madam Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chase?
Beat you to it.
You did.
We've taken that off the table.
That's off the table now.
I think we can move on to the next item, and therefore, I'd like to move to, yes we can, town attorney, an opinion?
Excuse me, we've taken it off the table for consideration.
You didn't tell me what you're moving.
That wasn't the motion.
It's on the agenda right now.
It's on the agenda right now, is there...
It's open to any motion, you can table it, you can move it. The motion was to take it off the table, it was not to take it off the table for consideration.
Then I'm going to make a motion, since it's off the table. Then I'm gonna make a motion since it's off the table.
Well, I'm sorry, Mr. Chase has the floor.
It's the same thing, once it's off the table, it's now before the body, it would be susceptible for any motion. You could, someone could move to table it, someone could move to move the item, someone could move to amend the item. It's just like any other item on the agenda.
Right.
Whoever has the floor could make whatever motion they like relevant to the...
So any motion is appropriate then, is what you're saying?
That is correct, it's like any other item, it's now in front of you on your agenda.
Okay, so that's not tabled right now, yes, Mr. Chase.
Right, Madam Chairman, I move to strike.
Okay, is there a second to the motion to strike?
Second.
Okay, there are two, there's a motion to strike and a second, all in favor of striking, say aye.
Roll call.
Aye.
Roll call.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
No, no.
No.
No. No.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
No.
And I said no also, so that motion fails eight to two, uh, okay.
Uh, Madam Chair? I make a motion that be it resolved by the Stratford Town Council, that the path to demolition of fifty-five Sutton Place, also known as the new center of school, be stopped, stop phase three testing. Further, a study will be conducted to determine the cost of returning the building to use as a school.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second, uh, discussion?
I have, I have a little...
Ms. Manis?
So, I have poured over the data for the studies and I, I'm in education. We have a two point nine percent population decrease. We are building these apartment homes. Whether or not we will need this location, because we're in this transition phase, I can't put my finger in a crystal ball and, and put the, I wish I could do the tea leaves for this, and I have no idea. My concern, and I think the concern of the residents when I speak for them is this. They understand about the school and they would want something better there than what is currently there. The current school situation, as much as you like the open classroom, Dr. DePonte, it's outdated. It would really need to be a different kind of setup, to set up for STEM and all those things, just like we're doing at Stratford High. Even Stratford High, I have concerns with the design because I think it's too boxy and really not forward-thinking. That's me. I also think outside the box a lot. I wonder, I wonder, I believe that the people, the big concern, is that if they let it go, nothing will come in its place. And I think the people want a guarantee of some kind, that they're not gonna get stuck with something they don't want, so they're just not removing something. And it's just like any hoarder that I've lived with in my life, or anybody that is around. You don't wanna let something go until you know something better is coming to take its place. And I don't know if we've seen that yet in the TOD presentations, or if, and any, any, anything from, from you, Mr. Mayor, that has come out, that has said, you'll support these people who live in this district and you like the historic district. You, you respect it and you, you like Stratford's history down there, that that's something that you wanna preserve. Whether it's with the design or whatever, that you're in some way gonna help to preserve what's there. Like I heard you say you're gonna have a little meetings and stuff, that's good, but you're, you're missing the point. Like, they wanna, they wanna preserve what they have, just like Perry House was preserved, you know? These are the things that make Stratford great. And that area, Sutton Avenue, that man that lost his house, it killed him when that pump station was put in. I believe that, it's out of a broken heart. They took his house away. Like, people have strong feelings on that street about their neighborhood. And they should be on your committee, you mentioned counselors, they belong on your committee. I bet you you would get them to go with you if you just held them close. So I think that, I just wanna say that, I think that the people just need to be heard and they need to be part of your process.
Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Madam Chairman?
Mr. Mayor is next.
I agree, I, I think that regardless of what happens, the, the building is gonna have to come down because of the contamination, whether it's gonna be a school, whether it's gonna be whatever is determined by the people. And we're willing to have that conversation. I talked to the planning agency in Bridgeport, they have some money where they wanna spend on a consultant to come in and do some renderings that people have input in. If they don't want a garage, it doesn't have to be a garage, it can be something else. I'm not wed to any specific project. What I'd like to see is Stratford Center revitalized, I'd like to see it become a little bit more of a destination. I'd like to see our merchants be successful, but more importantly, I'd like to have the people be proud of their center and have a resource there that they can use effectively and have a destination. And I think overall, the town is going through changes, whether it's the Army Engine Plant, Shakespeare Theater, Ferry Boulevard, the train station, the TOD, I mean, times are changing and I feel like Stratford's playing catch-up. I mean, we do look at other communities like Milford, for example. I remember years ago when they did Milford Green and even the City Heart Innovation Project, there were people referring to that as a Taj Mahal. Why are we spending all this money on our green area in Milford? Well, they went through a transition, the hardware store closed, all those businesses they had years ago closed and other things came in. And it wasn't an easy transition, nor is it one for us. We used to have a hardware store downtown also that closed. Uh, but we look at some of the communities and how they have transitioned and some have done it more successfully than others. Milford has a mall going downtown, that's definitely outside the box. Wall Street is being renovated, they have a theater, Sferka was here this evening, he's involved with that project. So towns are changing, downtowns are changing once again. And I think it's up to us as a community and you as a council to determine what your vision is for the town, what you'd like to see. And, and that's a positive, so I think by moving forward, having those discussions, and of course, you're gonna be part of them, is the right way to go. And, and there is no predetermined plan. And, you know, I keep hearing we don't want a garage, then don't do a garage, but do something. And I think everyone here wants to do something, they, they do care about our downtown area. So let's hear from the people, let's have a, go out there, let's have an open process, let the people participate, vet it, and if you like it, great, if you don't, then do something else, but at least we're starting. As opposed to having a building that's been decertified as a school, the board of vets made it clear they don't need it. Representative Llewellyn, or Councilman Llewellyn made a comment about the site, there's questions in regard to suitability. So there are a lot of issues there, as far as the apartment buildings, the impact, we don't see a lot of young children moving into these buildings. It's millennials and seniors, believe it or not, that are downsizing. So the markets are changing, not, people aren't buying houses like they used to. We're seeing it, the cap rate on apartment buildings is floating anywhere between four and five. That, that's where the investment money's going right now. That could change in twenty years, but you know what, maybe you wanna have senior housing downtown, maybe you wanna have a little more retail, maybe you wanna have another, like a black box theater and have square one go back downtown again, where it's gonna draw people in. But that's a conversation that needs to be had with the residents, not only on Sutton Avenue, but the historic district, but the entire town. So why don't we have it? And, but let's keep the process moving. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, and Mr. Llewellyn?
Yeah, I just wanna kind of bring up a couple of points, these may be things that I've brought up in the past. We saw earlier tonight, State Representative Gresko was here, we're talking about renovating Shakespeare Theater. These things are potentially gonna involve Hartford, involve the state. There's one point one million dollars that's been earmarked to take this school down. I would think it would be a tremendous slap in the face to Hartford and a big eye to Stratford if we were to have to give that money back over having made a short-sighted decision. Councilwoman Manis mentioned that the open classroom plan is no longer considered to be a usable design. Invariably, that building's coming down. So one of the other functions that that building coming down serves is right now with TOD, the developers are basically encircling downtown from the outside in. By taking control of that property, we will be sticking our flag right in the center of our town and we will determine what happens with TOD. Then it can start working from the center of town out, that's what happened in Fairfield. So we need to, I think, take over the center of town, we need to get access to whatever we can at the train station, work from there and move outward. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Llewellyn, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Mr. Mayor, I, I appreciate what you're trying to do and, and I do believe that there does need to be revitalization of the downtown. Right now, the businesses down there are suffering, I'm passing by constantly empty restaurants, whether it be Katie's Club Car or Maxwell's or one of those, they're, they're empty. And on Friday nights, when they should be full and we should have a booming downtown like you see on the Green in Milford, I agree with you on that. My, my issue here is that the people in District Two don't believe you. They don't believe your intentions and they don't believe that you're going to work with them. They have felt for years that you have worked against them and you have not had an open office to listen to them. And that is an issue in itself.
I'd like to address that, I, I think that's absurd. You know, I, I look at what happened with the AAA project and it's a shame, because it was, you know, careful what you wish for. Now you're looking at an entirely different project with a high-density development that I don't think anyone anticipated going there, but it was potentially out there. I think with this particular piece, this, this council controls that, you control the destiny of that piece as far as what it's gonna be. It's, to hear that they don't believe me, it's, it's the, it's the town in general, I mean, we're, we're looking to move forward. The building, i- if you decide to do this and take action, you're gonna send the money back to the state. The remediation is still gonna have to take place, which means you're gonna have to spend the money anyway. So I heard comments earlier about taxpayer money, you know, saving money. This is actually returning money and incurring a cost to the taxpayer in the future. Why would you do that when you have a grant right now to pay for this? I mean, this is a lot of money you're talking about that is gonna be spent at some point. And you're saying, you know what, send it back, we don't believe you. So then what, what's your next step? Start the process over again?
Because the people of the historic district have been threatened over and over and over again with a parking garage. Your former Economic Development Director sat on my back deck and threatened either a strip bar or a loud club at one AM getting out in the Ferry Boulevard property. That is the way your administration has been working since I've gotten involved with Stratford politics. So do I trust you and your administration to do the right thing? No, I don't.
Well, that's, that's a shame, because you know what, we've been straightforward, we've given information to people, we're talking about getting folks involved right here, whether you wanna participate or not is up to you. You've made decisions both personally and publicly on your own, you've suffered the consequences, good and bad, that's up to you. But again, we're looking to make this part of the historic district, to have that voice involved, to have a say what's gonna be there. And I do think that's important, it's valued, and that's what we're looking to do. I spoke to some of the council, people on this committee, also the chairperson, about doing this, having that discussion. Why don't we find out? Let's listen to the people.
Mr. Mayor, people in historic district, which is partly part of District Two and the rest of it is Bets District, um, they have said over and over again how they wanna revitalize Shakespeare, they want a Shakespeare Theater. Many people in my district are in favor of Shakespeare Theater. You have sat here a few months ago at a council meeting and said, nobody wants Shakespeare, your exact words, nobody wants it. And you are absolutely wrong. Tell me how the people in my district can trust you when you're not supporting them and you're putting words in their mouth that they did not say, they're your words.
Well, I, I represent the entire town, not just one district, and my comments are from what I hear from the north end to the south end to the historic district. And it was interesting during the TOD hearing when some, when a comment was made about, we don't wanna see any more development south of Stratford Avenue because of the congestion it can cause in Stratford Center. I don't know how long you've lived in this town, I've lived here for over fifty years and I can remember when Shakespeare was open. The traffic was pretty bad, park, there wasn't enough parking, it was an area that you avoided during plays, particularly when they were getting out or trying to get there. We have a big development down the road, people forget about when the Army Engine Plant, Alite Signal was there. We had thousands of people, there was gridlock down there, you couldn't move. But these are projects that were open and a lot of folks haven't lived here that long or have just moved in that don't remember how much traffic there was there at one time. And, and whether Shakespeare happens or not, looks like it's gonna happen, it's something, obviously this council wants to do something, which I think it should go out to another RFP and, and get that done, but make a decision on it, move forward. But realize that whatever happens or whoever, whomever takes it over, parking's gonna be an issue there and you're gonna have another bunch of complaints from individuals and residents. It's, you know, it's careful what you wish for, it's great that Shakespeare's gonna be there, but you're gonna have complaints about traffic then too. What, what this is doing right here is, you have funding in place to take care of remediation problem. There is no plan approved, there is no plan that's set in stone right now, but you have money to move forward to start talking about that plan, to have that vision and be part of it, embrace it.
Madam Chair? Okay, I'm sorry, Mr. Khan?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My understanding from speaking with the grant writer and other people in Town Hall is that the grant does not expire. Um, there may be a risk that the state could take back certain grants, but as long as we don't move on this motion, then the grant money stays there. The mayor and others have asked for a, more of a community effort that would possibly rebuild the trust that was broken or that people didn't recognize. So if we kept this on the table, we started some community-based discussion about what alternatives we should get and come up with some better renditions of what would be appropriate for the neighborhood, then if it says tear it down, or if it says keep it, we make the decision then. But for the time being, until that process, and it shouldn't take a year for that process, it should take a few months if we're focused to get everything on the table and all the constituents heard. So I'd like to keep this on the table until that...
Okay, so are you, are you making a motion to table, Mr. Khan?
Not at this point, so discussion can continue.
Okay, Ms. Antezzo?
I just wanna make a couple of observations, I did go to the TOD meeting because this has kind of evolved into that. And I was impressed by two, um, three speakers, actually. One mentioned that no, uh, project like TOD would succeed unless you had community buy-in. The other person said that we should examine not just, say, center school, but the entire ring around the train station. And the third gentleman that got up said, you know, I'm going up Main Street, where is there room to put these things? And I thought that was, I think those are things we have to look at. The other thing has to do with center school itself. People keep saying it's very old, outdated. I think that's rather interesting when you consider that Franklin School original section was built in nineteen fourteen and that Nichols School just celebrated its one-hundredth anniversary. Now, I, I, but the lesson learned is that they should not have gone off on trend and done that, uh, open classroom business. If they kept the classes the way they were a hundred years ago, they'd still be using the school.
Okay, Mr. Young?
Um, the thing about this is that by taking this off the table, uh, we've kind of done what was, what's happening here. We, um, we have stopped the construction and stuff on the center school right now by tabling this issue. And as times, a few months have gone on, things are starting to evolve. And we're starting to hear new plans, we're starting to hear new potential. We have to look into an idea of whether a feasibility, whether this could be a school again, or whether it's even worth it. So that's what I'm saying is, by leaving it on the table, at least behind the scenes, we can try to get this thing, keep it moving, getting the public involvement involved in it, and make a long-term plan for how we fix the center of town. Or not fix it, but redevelop it.
Uh, Mr. Young, are you making a motion to put it back on the table?
I would put, make a resolution to put it back.
Well, well, could, could we finish discussion first because there's two people wanna do the same thing?
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Kadim.
Thank you. I mean, I greatly appreciate you allowing me to speak on this. Um, center school, if you remember, I actually visited the school, I went on the roof, I went all through the school. And the school needs to be re, how do you say, redone. It needs to be, because a lot of it is off code, in fact, they don't even have a basement, they have like an air venting system through the floors. And, um, the building is a beautiful building, it is a well-structured building, but to operate as it is now, it really needs renovation, and renovation is a good thing. What are we gonna do with the renovation, or do we want to put something, put something similar there? You know, another type of school, or even a community center, something that the town can use. But, uh, I, I wouldn't wanna change the neighborhood. Like I said, I walked up and down the street, these people really invest in their homes, they keep their grass perfect. I mean, that place is beautiful, so it has to be something like-minded to keep the place beautiful. So whatever it is, even if it's something where it's a shopping center, part of the same shopping center kind of thing with a parking in the front, so that it can still, at hours, it'll be closed so that they can still have their community, I don't, it's just an idea, but I think that something needs to be done, it needs to be done. I, I, me personally, I prefer to stay at school whether you put a new one there, but I mean, quite naturally, we have to really, and I'm happy that the mayor said what he said tonight about having an open discussion with, with the community. And also, he also stated that it doesn't have to be a parking lot, so we already know, stop worrying about the parking lot. He has a vision, we can all contribute to that vision to try to do something nice in that part of town. And I'm excited about it, I really am, whether it's a school, you know, I, I want it to be a school, but if it's not a school, it's something that the town needs, I'm with it, you know? The helicopters, whatever, whatever, museum, whatever you wanna do to keep it aesthetically beautiful in that, in that, that one block radius that will benefit the town, whatever it is.
Okay, Mr. Farrington Posner?
Okay, what I do wanna bring up is I was at the last TOD meetings, the last two. And at the last one, there was a panel that spoke on this issue. It was supposed to be about TOD and it really was focused on center school. It wasn't about the whole half-mile radius of the TOD. One of the panel speakers was Mr. Jarvis, who owns businesses, owns a huge amount of business in the downtown area. Mr. Jarvis went on record saying that he wants a parking garage. And that was very well-stated for everybody to hear. I am gonna tell you right now, if this building is torn down, you are one step... to tell you right now, if this building is torn down, you are one step closer to having a 600 to 700-car parking garage on Sutton Avenue. That's what's going to happen.
Madam Chair.
Okay, Ms. Manis.
I wanted to address, I've been waiting to address the comments that the mayor made directed toward Mr. Posner. The comments that you made to Scott are the comments that are made at the meetings, that were made by the former economic development director. And it's the tone in which you said it, like, "Well, you didn't pick it, so now look what happens. You live with the consequences." Those kind of words have meaning behind them. And it's a dog whistle to people in the historic district. Many of them start going, "Well, are we going to end up with affordable housing units and hundreds of units behind us?" And then they get scared. And when they get scared, they get feisty, right? And then people get angry. And then they walk further away from you. What needed to happen in AAA that you brought up was that somebody needed to take the plan and go like this and put the parking and the trucks in the front of the building instead of by the houses. But nobody thought of it because people are so busy fighting that nobody got out of the way to think outside the box.
We're just talking about center schools.
I understand. But I'm talking about center school, too. We got to calm down, take a deep breath, and look at this. And you need really creative, out-of-the-box thinkers. I'm sorry. Some of the folks, they're just, they've been doing it the same way for so long. You know, they don't know what to do. If you've been in politics for so long, if you've been in town, you just forget. Maybe we need some young people, these millennials that are coming in. They need to, like, take a look at these plans and say, "How about this? How about that?" We need old, young, lots of different kinds of people who haven't been involved because they bring a different perspective to it. And I think that that simple switch, we would be in a totally different place right now. So this is a chance to do that same kind of thing with this project. And whether or not you take the reins and actually do it, I don't know. But if you talk to people like that, they're never going to work with you. They're just not.
Is there a motion to table, Mr. Khan?
Motion to table, second.
Okay, there's a motion to table and a second. All in favor of tabling, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, there are two nos, eight yeses. Motion passes. It's back on the table. Tabled appointments, I'm just going to run through these unless there's somebody, some, yes.
Madam Chairman, I lost my place.
We are at 7.4.1.
Okay, thank you, Madam Chairman.
Page five.
I'd like to move to 7.4. I'm sorry, hold on.
7.4.
7.4.5.
Okay.
I'd like to remove that from the table, Madam Chairman.
Is there a motion to remove that from the table?
Second.
So moved.
Okay. All in favor of removing that from the table, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Madam Chairman and my fellow councilpersons, resolve that Tony Smith of Stratford B and is hereby appointed a member of the Stratford Library Association as a result of a vacancy created by Margaret Backtell, whose term will expire on December 31, 2017.
And she was appointed a life member. Is there a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes nine to one. Congratulations, Professor Smith. I hope you're qualified for this.
Has he spent time in libraries?
Huh?
Has he spent any time in libraries?
He's spent no time in libraries. Waterfront and Harbor Management Commission, we have asked that commission if they have any recommendations, and they will be getting back to us. They will be getting back to us on Wednesday. Commission on Aging, that will stay on the table unless I hear otherwise?
No, Madam Chairman, I did meet with the...
Is there a motion to take that off the table?
Madam Chairman, I would move we take that off the table.
Second.
All in favor of taking it off the table?
Aye.
Okay, all opposed?
Yeah, Madam Chairman, I met with Diane, the executive director over at the Baldwin Center this morning. She indicated that Dale McLean wishes to be reappointed, is an active member of the commission, and she would recommend his reappointment. Therefore, resolve that Dale McLean of Stratford B and is hereby reappointed a member of the Commission on Aging.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Harden. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Okay, motion passes, all opposed?
Madam Chairman.
Motion passes 10 to 0.
Madam Chairman, resolve the second item for the Commission on Aging, resolve item B, that Geraldine Gemza of Stratford B and is hereby appointed a member of the Commission on Aging. Again, her term expired. She's an active member of the commission, strongly recommended by the executive director at the Baldwin Center.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Harden. Discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed. Motion passes 10 to 0. Board of Assessment Appeals, that will be staying on the table unless I hear otherwise. We covered 8.1. New Business Modification to Beautification Committee Membership Process. Ms. Manis, do you want to cover this?
This information was forwarded by the Beautification Committee to the council a few months ago. It was added to the agenda for this month based on the town attorney's opinion. To modify the resolution, to modify the membership for the Beautification Committee to be as follows. A. Interested persons should submit their resume along with motivations for being appointed to the committee to the chair of the Beautification Committee. Point of clarification, Ms. Cabral will still receive those applications, and those applications will be forwarded to us as well. So they're going to go through Carol. B. The committee will refer nominations for the committee membership to the town council. The committee can request the town council remove a member if the member does not abide by the committee rules regarding attendance and participation in activities. Within the course of the, before it's seconded, but within the course of the conversations, Mr. Posner was there and mentioned the need to continue, I would like a point of clarification from the attorney if we need to put that into this, that the applications will still go to the council clerk in addition to the chair of beautification. That came up as a question of the committee.
Do you need a second on this motion?
Well, okay.
Second.
Is there a second on the motion?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Was there a question to the town attorney about amending it?
Yeah. Does it need the amendment, or is it always going to go through the council clerk and we're just adding to it that it would go to the chair as well?
Well, it's a council committee, so I'm assuming it would go through the council clerk.
Okay, so the council clerk, and then a copy will continue to be sent to us. And then with this resolution, a copy will be sent to the chair of beautification as well.
So to be clear, just to be clear, that, so it does not need to be amended?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Discussion?
Madam Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chase.
I guess, first of all, question to the proponent. How does this differ from our current procedure in nominating people to committees or recommending people to committees?
The current procedure is that the Beautification Committee exists concurrently with the council.
Right.
The council is supposed to, when they're elected every two years, reappoint all the people. And what has happened over, obviously, there's like, there was originally 10, and there was originally 10 beautification members. So if you do the math, you can probably figure out.
Yeah, I can figure that out, Ms. Manis. You don't have to be sarcastic.
So this is what happened. I'm not being sarcastic. I'm just telling you, this was a different kind of committee back in the day. Now, it has become a gardening, forestry, conservation group. They're planting, they're picking trees for town, they're giving awards. They've done a number of things that go beyond just, you know, making sure Town Hall is done, and maybe a garden here and there. They're actually taking care of the grounds. These are people who are committed. They've been committed for a number of years. Without a charter revision, we can't change the fact that they technically need to be reappointed every two years. However, this gives the chair of that committee some kind of indication of who might be coming their way from the council or be able to give some kind of input. Sometimes they get applications directly because that's just been the historical way. And they have no way of putting them forward. They didn't know how. It always went through them. So they wanted some kind of formal recognition that they should be able to look and see who's on there and be able to put things forward and be able to also take people off who are appointed and never show up. So they wanted some kind of formal piece. That was their letter. This was their idea. I support them in their idea. I think that this is a better, even better than the letter that they sent. The letter was very specific. They've made rules now. You have to have eight hours of community service, all kinds of stuff. But they have, according to their rules, there are now rules that they've adopted. So it's not going to kick anybody off. It's still up to the council to appoint. It's still up to the council to take people off. But they have some kind of say or stake in their committee. And that's all they're asking for.
This still makes no sense to me. I have to be frank with you. They can make recommendations to the council. The council will consider them. Recommendations, yes. I mean, I've got a pile of application forms that come in directly to the committees or come directly to the council. If they get something forwarded to us, we certainly will look at it.
So I would encourage...
I'm sorry, Mr. Chase had the floor.
And so this just doesn't make any sense. Why are we making this one change for this one group when we have, I don't know, how many committees do we have? Carry 37 committees? I mean, now we're going to start making, set a precedent and start making changes on how committee appointments are made? I mean, we're opening up a Pandora's Box if this passes.
Well, I understand.
Okay, I'm sorry. Is there, are there other people who want to comment on this? Mr. Young?
Well, bottom line, Mr. Chase, is that the Beautification Committee Chair was getting people put on her committee, which she didn't even know about.
Right.
And so they're like, "What are the qualifications of these people? How come I didn't get a resume? How come I didn't get any information on these people?" And then all of a sudden, they're on my committee. That's the problem. So what they're trying to do is clarify that, make sure that there's a system set up so that they're getting the things and that we're getting them.
Well, that's very easy. All we have to do is inform or let the council clerk know the chairman of the Beautification Committee that the council has appointed this person to the committee.
And I think that should be done with every committee, every time we send out a letter. It should also go to the...
That happened. And Ms. DePonte, you were, who appointed you was asked. And the woman said, and they looked, she held up the letter that was signed by you. And then I was there to clarify that Mr. Chase had put the name forward. And the entire committee looked and said, and I said, "And it had come through you?" And they said, "No, it didn't come through us." They, whatever their traditions were prior to all of us being elected was very different, is the point.
I just want to clarify what the process has been. And this has nothing to do with me as chair or anything. But once any appointment is made, the council clerk kindly provides a letter that the chair signs, and it goes to that individual. But I do agree, and I agreed with Ms. Griffin when I spoke with her over the holidays, that there is a loop hole there that we do need to, that we also need to notify the chair of each of these committees, which I think currently is not explicitly happening. Often, the chairs of the committees know because they, they're following what goes on in the council, but not necessarily. So we do need to close that loop for all committees and commissions and simply send an email saying, "By the way, you have a new person, and it would be good to catch up with them." This is a different animal. I just want to clarify one other thing. I was not in that loop a couple of months ago to get notification of this. I was not. If you look at the email exchanges, I was not in that. So once I, when I spoke with Ms. Griffin about this over the holidays, at first, I had no idea what she was talking about. So once I realized it, and the same day, you closed that loop.
The letter was sent. I was not at two meetings because I had, I was away in the night school.
But anyway.
But the point is, is that they sent that letter on to Carol, and it came to the council. I didn't even know where it came from.
No, it didn't, yeah.
I went, "Where'd this come from?" So this committee is existing and doing their own thing for a long time, is the point.
Okay, is there a motion?
Madam Chair?
Oh, I'm sorry.
May I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Is there a second to the motion?
Excuse me, I have one person I would like to, that 9.2.4, Steve Reguskas, be resolved that...
Okay, wait a second. There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second to the motion to adjourn?
Second.
Once there's a motion to adjourn, it interrupts everything.
It's non-debatable. Roll call.
We only have four more things to do.
Wait, is there a second?
Brian, excuse me. Brian?
A motion to adjourn is a non-debatable motion.
Non-debatable motion.
Was there a second, Madam Chair?
There was a second by Mr. Llewellyn.
Roll call.
Sure, go ahead. Mr. Farrington Posner?
No.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Yes.
No.
Okay, and I guess that's, I think that was six nos to three yeses.
I tried.
I'm voting yes, but it doesn't matter. We still go on.
Madam Chairman?
Can we take something out of order?
We're still on beautification.
I know. We're still on beautification, please.
Let my ladies have their fun.
Okay, so I'm going to call the question. All in favor of this?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Okay, motion passes nine to one.
Madam Chair, can we take 9.2.4, zoning commission, alternative member, three-year terms out of order so we can move on? Because I know a lot of people want to leave.
Is there a motion to...
A second.
Is there a motion to amend the, there's a motion to amend the agenda, and there was a second by...
A second.
Scott Farrington Posner. Okay, all in favor of amending the agenda to move that up?
Aye.
Madam Chairman, I don't know which one we're talking about.
Moving 9.2.4.
9.2.4 up.
Which is the last one before adjournment.
Okay. No, we've got to do these last two, Commission on Aging.
I'm okay with doing everything, but everybody seemed like they want to run out of here. That's why I wanted to move it up.
No, we got two more.
Okay.
We have a first and a second, so we have to...
Okay, wait, I'm losing, okay, thank you. All in favor of moving 9.2.4 up in the agenda? Say aye.
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 All opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0.
Resolve that Steve Reguskas be and is hereby appointed as alternate member of zoning commission term for Tony Smith, expiring January 2017.
A second.
So moved.
Okay, discussion. My understanding is that Mr. Smith has no intention, did not intend to continue on this. Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
No. Motion passes eight to two.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're back up to the Board of Zoning Appeals, alternate member. Is there any nomination for that? If not, motion to table?
No, no, that's...
No, these are new appointments.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of tabling that?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0. Commission on Aging.
Madam Chairman, resolve that Gus...
Chuska.
Chuska, I'm sorry, Mr. Chuska, be reappointed to the Commission on Aging, whose term expired December 31, 2016.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0.
Yes, Madam Chair, be it resolved that George Hengel of Stratford B and is hereby appointed a member of the Commission on Aging. It's another continued appointment.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Mr. Harden. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed?
Madam Chairman?
I'm sorry, all opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0. Planning Commission, is there a motion to table that?
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
I'm going to make the motion to adjourn.
We just need to, we just need to do this one thing.
They're already tabled. You want to leave?
No, it's not tabled.
Mr. Chase.
All right, go ahead.
Is there a motion to table?
Madam Chair, I need to add two things to the agenda for Longbrook Park Commission today for the ice rink.
We're covering 9.2.3.
I know, but before we adjourn, just add those two items.
I'm not recognizing that yet. Is there a motion to table 9.2.3?
So moved.
Okay, is there a second? Oh, there were two. Okay, all in favor of tabling?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I make a motion...
Motion passes 10 to 0.
I make a motion to add to the agenda. At the Longbrook Park Commission meeting, unfortunately, the minutes just came out today, I just got them from the council clerk, we did change the hours of the ice rink. And I'd like to get that passed by council today.
So you want to add that?
So I want to, you know, be it resolved that the new hours of the ice rink...
No, 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 I'm sorry. First, you need to add that to the...
I would like to add that to the agenda.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of adding that to the...
Point of information, did we do 9.2.4?
We did.
Yes.
And we did, it's the one before.
Mm-hmm. Okay, so there was a motion and a second to add that to the agenda.
Yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion passes 10 to 0. Mr. Farrington Posner, be fast.
Okay, quickly. Make a motion to amend the hours of the ice rink to be open from Sunday through Saturday, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
That's every day?
Every day, seven days a week, 9:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m.
Second. I'm sorry.
As voted on by the Longbrook Park... As voted on by the Longbrook Park Commission, favorable.
Madam Chairman?
Yes.
Discussion?
Wait, so, so there was a motion, there was a seconded by Mr. Kadim. Okay, discussion.
What's this going to cost?
It's not going to cost, it costs anything really extra. They're just going to open it up and close it at night. There's no supervision throughout that time. They're just going to be opening it up in the morning, closing it at night. The lights are automatic, so they'll go on, they're timed.
Okay, so what time will they close?
They'll close about 9:15.
At night?
Yes.
So doesn't that mean the town employee would be paid overtime?
But the parks will be open. There's other parks open till 10:00 PM, where they have to close.
It's not supervised.
And, and also, Mr. Chase, this is all dependent on weather, so for seven days a week being open, the reason we did that was because maybe if we get two days out of that seven, because the weather wasn't permitting it, because it wasn't a freeze, that they would only be doing it maybe two days a week, or maybe three days a week, or maybe if it's a sunny week like we're going to be having, no days.
Your point's made, continue.
Thank you.
Are you through?
There's, well, we've got to vote on that.
No, because, no, I'm not through.
No, I'm sorry, we're still in discussion.
Oh, a discussion.
So you've checked with the finance department in terms of the, there's no cost involved with this extension of hours?
The cost was already approved by the town council, and the cost is actually lowered by about $30,000 from the original that was approved.
And there's no additional cost due to-
There's no additional cost, no.[1713.03]